2017 zoning board of adjustments meeting for the town of Merrimack. If you could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm just gonna, I'll get to everything. So, the next zoning board meeting will be November 29th, 2017. The preamble, so, "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the community development office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against, I'm sorry, for or against the request. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening. The board reserves the right to ask for testimony, additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers." Currently, we have three members on the board. We are expecting potentially another member this evening, which would put four. At this point, with three members on the board, if your petition comes before three members, you need all three members to vote into the affirmative in order for your petition to pass. If even one person votes in the negative, your petition is denied. So, I know that I've already been approached by Attorney Michael, and I'm going to, with the board's permission, okay, we have a fourth board member is here. So, um, hold on. Attorney Michael, do you still want to proceed with? Yeah, okay. So, with the board, I'm going to, we have one petition that will continue to next month, so I'm gonna read that in for continuance for next month. And that is the number two petition on our, this evening, and that is William Lats, Lastauska?
Lastoka.
Lastoka, sorry. In Land Joe Goshen LLC Petitioner LLC variance under section 3.08.9 of the zoning ordinance permit the existing improvements, barn shed, home, et cetera, to remain within 100-foot landscape buffer proposed as part of a cluster subdivision. This parcel is located at 6 Watkins Road in the R Residential and Ographer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area Tax Map 4C Lot 449, Case Number 2017-39. The petitioner's request to move this, this hearing, or this petition to the November 29, 2017, meeting. Do I need a, do we need a motion?
Moved.
Second in by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fran. Fran made the motion, Lynn seconded it, 400. Thank you. If you are here for that petition, that petition is now going to be moved to the November meeting. Okay, so now that we have four board members, changes the dynamic a little bit for everyone else who's still here this evening. You can opt to, again, have your petition moved to November, or you could have it heard before the board. You will need to get at least three in the affirmative in order for your petition to move forward. If you, if you get two affirmative and two against, your petition is denied. So you need to get at least the majority, which would be three people, to move forward with your petition. You can opt to still have your petition heard this evening, or you can, if you'd like, we can move it to November, the November meeting, when we should have more members of our board. Okay. You don't have to wait for your petition to be called if you wanna, if you wanna step out. Okay. All right, that being said, for anybody who plans on speaking this evening, in either for a petition, against a petition, or speaking on behalf of petition, could you please stand and raise your right hand? If you're doing any speaking time in front of the board, you need to, okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Okay. When you come up, there's a clipboard. Please make sure that you fill out, you know, you fill out the clipboard, and make sure that the, there's a bright green light on the microphone, and make sure you're speaking into the microphone. The first petition of this evening is Stephen and Diane Bazucci? Bazachi, sorry, sorry. Bazaki, sorry. Petitioners, owners, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a newly single, of a new single-family dwelling on a lot, on Lot 1, a Lot 105, with a front setback of six feet, whereas 30 feet is required, and a rear setback of 16.3 feet, whereas 40 feet is required, and the construction of a new garage on Lot 151, with a setback of five feet, whereas 30 feet is required, and a rear setback of 26.6 feet, whereas 40 feet is required, with the existing house and garage to be raised. The parcels are located at 12 and 15 Lakeside Drive in the R Residential District, Tax Map 6A-1, Lots 105 and 151, Case Number 2017-36. We are gonna hear this, instead of hearing it one, we're gonna hear them both, we're gonna, both at the same time, we're gonna make a motion on, and approve or deny both at the same time. Okay?
Hi. Good evening. Let's make sure I get close to this.
Yep, state your name and...
Michael Glass from Bernstein Sure. I'm here with the owners and applicants, Stephen and Diane Bazaki, and next to me is Tom Carr from Meridian. As noted in the introduction, we're here for property at 12 and 15 Lakeside Drive. We're seeking a variance from section 3.05 concerning setbacks as part of a redevelopment of the applicant's property. This is in the residential zone, it's adjacent to Babusick Lake, surrounded in residential zone with other single-family homes. The, the, I'm gonna refer to property, and actually, I'm gonna go point to this map, I think that'll be easier for you. Is this on? Yep. So, the property consists of these two lots.
You can bring that, you can bring that up a little bit more, so, in the pictures we got, that's good, thanks.
Under control. All right. So, the property consists of two lots. We have the Lot 105 on the left, that is the house lot. You can see that the Amherst line bisects that, kinda towards the lakeside. So, the, the house is, is, this is all in Merrimack. The, on the other side of Lakeside Drive is the garage, the existing garage location. You can see this is sort of an elongated lot. The existing garage and workshop is on the northern part of that. It's tucked really close into the corner. The, we're proposing to bring the garage, you know, to the southerly part of that lot, such that it is directly across the street from the existing house. Right now, this garage is almost confusing as to what house it relates to. So, additionally, as part of the proposal, we would put in a new septic system, the back of the garage, away from the lake. So, the property's been in the applicant's family for decades, since 1969, and candidly, they wanna retire there, spend many more decades there. As part of that proposal, they're, they're looking to live in a house that will sort of accommodate, you know, aging in place. The current structure isn't designed necessarily with those sorts of considerations in mind. Specifically, we're looking to put a structure, a house, that, that has sort of modern width of stairways, and hallways, and doors, so, so that that can accommodate folks that may in the future need assistance with a cane, or a walker, or wheelchairs even. So, so the proposal, quite candidly, I think this is a win-win for everybody involved. The house gets upgraded to the benefit of the owners. The proposal actually brings in the non-conforming, non-conformities, which I'll run through in a second, makes the lots more conforming, and, and it results in a updated septic, which is, you know, obviously a sound principle, close to that, that resource.
You want to go through the five points?
Sure.
Okay.
And I'll just, quickly, Mr. Chair, I'll just note, in my application, it has the specific dimensions. We are making, you know, we are making the bulk of those more conforming. I'll let you all look at that. If you have any questions, let me know. So, specifically, and, we've done this together enough, interrupt me if, if...
Well, when you, yeah, as soon as you finish each, if there's any questions after each one, we'll listen.
Yep, perfect. So, granting the variances in this case will not be contrary to the public interest. And, and as the courts have said, to be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance, such that it violates the basic zoning objectives. Here, you know, we can acknowledge that the primary purpose of building setbacks is to establish a zoning or building envelope within a lot. However, in this case, these are all pre-existing non-conforming lots and structures. So those, those setbacks, you know, just are moot as applied to this particular property, given that the existing and allowed uses and buildings just, you know, are not conforming with those. So, this, this proposed project simply seeks to replace and modernize aging structures and infrastructure on pre-existing non-conforming lots. You know, these are, these are really de minimis requests in my mind, and I think in some towns we probably wouldn't even be here, quite honestly. But however, because there are, on the house lot, because there's a slightly altered footprint, that's why we're here on the variance, and obviously, we are moving the garage, which, which is a new structure. However, as a whole, this application increases the property's zoning conformity. So, you know, while variances are technically necessary, the, the basic zoning objective of preventing overcrowding and sort of keeping, you know, buildings within an envelope is, is satisfied. Moreover, the project includes a new septic system, and upgrades to the property's well, and these are all consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and done in a manner to promote health, safety, and welfare. So in light of that, the requested variances do not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance or its basic objectives, and granting the requested relief will not be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions? Yes?
Where's the current septic system?
I can answer that.
The current septic system is located, in this area.
Actually, you gotta, you gotta either take a mic, you gotta either take a mic with you, or, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Is it on the house lot, or the, or the garage lot?
It is on the house lot.
Okay.
The, the current septic system is located right here. The abutters, Laura English and Don Herman, is the septic tank. We have a waiver request for the state that's been approved for that location, but the actual leach field, there's a septic tank here in a leach field, or leaching area here that's even closer to their well than the contained tank in the proposed septic.
And where are you proposing it?
The proposed septic system will have a septic tank and a pump chamber combination tank. It'll be pumped underneath the road, up to a leach field, and back of the proposed garage.
Okay, thank you.
And we recently were at town council to get easements granted for the septic line. There's a water line that already exists from the shed here, that comes down to the house. So we grant, the town granted an easement for the existing water line, an easement for the new sewer line, and the Bazakis granted an easement back to the town for the land of the road that's actually over their property.
And that raises another point, that you can sort of tell this is cleaning up, you know, what already exists out there.
Any other questions on number one? Fran? Or number two?
Sure. So the spirit of the ordinance is observed, and, and this conversation is similar to the public interest, so I'll keep this brief. That said, that the rationale for minimum setbacks is to prevent, you know, lot overcrowding. As minimum setbacks postdate the creation of the property and the development of these structures, it's difficult to consider the spirit of setback applied to this case in this neighborhood. That said, this proposal will increase yard setbacks as a whole, and will relocate the garage away from the abutters and closer to the applicant's house. It'll allow for construction of a house that complies with, consistent with modern building and safety requirements, and modern septic design. As such, the spirit of the ordinance is observed in these requested variances.
Question? Number three?
Granting the variance will do substantial justice. Substantial justice is a balancing test, and substantial justice is done when the loss of denying the variance exceeds the gain to the general public in strictly enforcing the ordinance. Here, denying the variances will not result in any appreciable gain to the general public, given that these uses are already there, given that the proposal will actually reduce the, reduce and improve the setbacks, you know, modernize the structure and infrastructure on land adjoining the lake. Moreover, granting the variances will, will, I think, actually result in a gain to the public. On the other hand, denying the application will result in a substantial loss to the applicants, prevent the safe and reasonable use of their property. Such, loss of denying the variance greatly exceeds any public gain, and warrants granting this application.
Questions? Number four?
The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The requested variance will not diminish the character of the neighborhood. The proposed structures will be used in a manner consistent with the existing house and garage. The propose, the proposal should not produce different or significant traffic, noise, odor, or other detrimental impacts to the surrounding area. Again, these uses are already there, we're just trying to improve the situation. At, at the very least, I would suggest that values may increase, given this. However, at the very least, the values will not be diminished.
Number five?
Fifth and finally, unnecessary hardship, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish this from other properties in the area. Denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardship, because there's, there's really no relationship, fair or substantial, between the general public, purpose of the ordinance provisioned issue, and the specific application of that provision. Here, in this case, the property is specially unique in its historic use, location, its orientation with respect to Lakeside Drive, the fact that one of the lots is bisected by a town line. The, the existing structures and uses also add a component here. They're both non-conforming, and they're both improved with historic structures that do not comply with, with modern setback requirements. The primary purpose, again, for these setbacks is to protect against overcrowding. The proposal will actually increase conformity by slightly improving the setbacks from what currently exist. General health, safety, and welfare will be improved through modernized buildings and septic design. Given the particulars of this case, that there's really no substantial relationship between the purpose of setback requirements and its application to the property. And the second piece of that is that this proposed use is reasonable, because it contemplates a, a use that's currently taking place at the property, and it's permitted, which is single-family residential and accessory structures. So that said, my brief conclusion, if there's no questions, is again, I think this is a win-win for all parties involved. We're seeking to improve the use and the structures in a manner that, that benefits, you know, the owners, the neighborhood, and the town as a whole.
Cool. Any questions? Lynn? Fran? Lenny? All right, oh, real quick, I forgot to put this in here. Lenny's sitting in tonight for Tony, who is not with us. Apologize, so, you're on the clock. I apologize, I should've said that earlier. Okay, sorry, anyway, um, so if there's no questions, I'm going to, I ask, is there anybody here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Okay, is there anybody here that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Discussion, questions, further questions, discussion, motions?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance, to permit the construction of a single-family, a new single-family dwelling, excuse me, on Lot 105, with a front setback of six feet, whereas 30 feet is required, and a rear setback of 16.3 feet, whereas 40 feet is required, and the construction of a new garage on Lot 151, with a front setback of five feet, whereas 30 feet is required, and a rear setback of 26.6 feet, whereas 40 feet is required, with the existing house and garage to be raised. Parcel is located at 12 and 15 Lakeside Drive, in the R Residential District, Tax Map 6A-1, Lot 105 and 151. Case number? I'll second it.
Second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 400. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. BHL Real Estate Holdings LLC, petitioner-owner, variance under section 17.10B of the zoning ordinance to permit a sign zero feet from the front property line, whereas 15 feet is required. As per previously granted variance, the parcel is located at 660 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial District, Tax Map 6E-2, Lot 014, Case Number 2017-40. Can I just say that it looks so much better than the pink house that used to be there?
Working on it.
It looks so much better.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it.
So what are we looking at here?
So...
Oh, I'll just state your name and then...
Sorry. Brian Labrie, BHL Real Estate Holdings, 660 DW Highway.
Okay.
Basically, in short, the right-of-way, the state right-of-way from edge of pavement is about 18 feet, and it takes up about half of the front lawn.
Okay.
So obviously, we can't put a sign in any, any of that.
Mm-hmm.
From the, and the only reason I'm asking for zero feet, normally, I try to accommodate something for the town, but zero feet puts it right at the 18-foot mark off edge of pavement, and it's like an eight-foot-long sign. So, it really, there's not a whole lot of room left between the sign and the building. And really, all I'm looking to do is, is put a mulch bed that's already existing, and be able to scoot a lawnmower behind it, to, to cut the grass and whatnot, so...
So, the sign was already approved?
It was, for 15 feet, and, you know, from 20 down to 15. And I think, something is not to scale with the way Meridian did that, because when you physically, and I invited the board, and I apologize, I invited the board to come out and take a look at it. I was unaware that the board was not allowed to do that, so I apologize if I...
Well, we've all been by the property, so we all, we, we know the property in question. So you're, so where the house is sitting, I guess, where are you looking to put, you're looking to put this lengthwise?
Yeah.
So that can be read each way?
Yes, exactly, exactly. So it'd be, you know, perpendicular to the house.
Okay.
And it probably, in, in a perfect world, you know, if, if it's at the zero foot mark or at the 18-foot mark, it's, still at that point, it's like, you know, 15 feet off of the house, so to speak, so. This is a question of feet, and all I'm trying to do is just make it so that we can at least see the sign a little bit, and it's not blocked by, you know, a van on one side, and, and trees and whatnot on the other, so...
All right, why don't we go through the five criteria, if we have questions, we'll step in.
I'll try to keep it as brief as I can. You know, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest. You know, the sign is in line with other signs, I think, in the immediate area, such as, you know, Rochets, or St. Albain, or, or some of the other signs that are, that are close by. It's gonna eventually be, once it's installed, landscaped around it, I think it would be an enhancement to the, to the area. I guess the spirit of the ordinance, moving to two?
Any questions on number one, guys?
I'm sorry, I went one.
All right, number two?
The spirit of the ordinance, you know, it's a major method of advertising for us, and public view is important. I don't, I don't believe that this, by moving it back a few feet, I don't think it would hurt any of our neighbors. I don't think it would, I don't think it affects anybody but us. It's not residential, it's in commercial.
When you say move it back a couple of feet, you mean move it towards the house or towards the road?
We'll toward, you know, toward, toward the, I'm sorry.
Back towards the street.
Back toward the street, back toward the right-of-way, is what I meant.
All right.
Number three?
Number three.
Go on to... Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it would actually allow customers to know where we're located by being able to see the, the sign going north and south. If it's too close to the house, it probably is not gonna be seen, at least going south, just because of the geography and the landscape that exists. I think it would do justice to at least my business to at least have customers, or potential customers, acknowledge where we are.
Question? All right, no questions?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Sure.
Since you want to put it closer to the road, do you have customers pulling into your location?
We do.
Now, is that gonna affect the line of sight?
No, it won't.
Pulling out?
The right-of-way is so enormous...
Okay.
...that I could probably put three signs in front of it and still have a clear vision of both directions.
Just wanna make sure that there's no interference.
Yeah, it's, it's not at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, number four?
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. As you've stated, I have Rochets on one side, I have AB Septic on the other side. I think a new side and a landscape around it can only increase the property values. I definitely don't see the properties left or right being diminished. As I said, we're gradually improving the property every year, and I think having a nice sign out front would probably help the area.
Number, uh, number five?
Number five. Simply put, I guess, the way it's depicted on the plan, for whatever reason, doesn't seem to scale in reality. It puts the sign way too close to the building, and it's, it's out of view from the public. And I think if we were allowed to just move it a little bit closer to the right-of-way, you know, I asked for zero, because I think if you had seen it, you'd understand it. But even any closer to the right-of-way would be, would be helpful to, to our cause. And I think it's proposed as a reasonable one, because if we can get it closer to the right-of-way, the sign actually has a purpose, and it can actually, you know, explain what that commercial building is.
Okay. What questions do we have? Do you feel like the hardship was met? What do you, I'm, just to refresh my memory, what is the sign, what size sign was approved?
I think it was 32, 32 square feet.
32 square feet, okay.
Yeah.
Questions, concerns? Boss? Fran?
No.
All right. Open this up to the public. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, I'll close the public. For the board, questions, discussion, motions?
I'll make a motion.
Question?
Go ahead. Okay. Make the motion that we grant the variance to BHL Real Estate Holdings LLC, petitioner-owner, variance under section 17.10B of the zoning ordinance to permit a sign zero feet from the front property line, whereas 15 feet is required, as per previously granted variance. The parcel is located at 660 Daniel Webster Highway on the C2 General Commercial District, Tax Map 6E-2, Lot 014, in Case Number 2017-40.
I'll second.
Second, if I may. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 400.
Thank you.
Yep.
You guys have a good night.
You as well, thank you very much. All right, and next is MET General Contracting Inc., petitioner in June Harrington, owner, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a 24-by-26-foot garage, a 14-by-14-foot sunroom, and a 6-by-13-feet-six-inch farmer's porch, with a 7-foot-six-inch front setback, whereas 30 feet is required. Parcel is located at 5 Beaver Brook Drive, in the R2 Residential and Ographer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 6C, Lot 546, Case Number 2017-41.
Good evening. Mark Twodowsky, President, MET General Contracting, here in Merrimack. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I am proposing to put addition onto Arthur and June Harrington's residence, which is a, consists of a, we call a sunroom, farmer's porch, and a front, more for architecture on the farmer's porch to, for an entrance. If we were to butt the garage right up against the house, there would be no second entrance to, into the home. You'd have to go through the garage to get it to enter the home. So, we're trying to put a little bit of a farmer's porch in... put a little bit of a farmer's porch in a sunroom with the garage. One of the reasons why the garage is the size it is also is Arthur has MS, and we, we wouldn't, wouldn't want to see that to progress anymore to a stage than it is, so we're designing it so future, possibly put a handicap ramp into that garage so Arthur could get in and go into the home, so that's part of our design, we're doing it. We can, I can go into the five parts if you'd like.
So that we could answer any questions, please.
Would do. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. This variance granted would be contrary to public interest for several, several reasons. Granting the variance to build the twenty-four twenty-six garage with fourteen fourteen breezeway and six by thirteen six farmer's porch would not impede public or emergency vehicle traffic. It would not add any additional motor vehicle traffic to the neighborhood, nor it would add any, any additional foot traffic. There'd be no changes to the existing traffic patterns or the driveway. We would just be extending the driveway up to the new garage. The proposed garage sunroom addition would be constructed for a single-family use only. The appearance of the new addition would be current, up to the current home, when neighborhood with aesthetics would be, I think, right in line with what you see in that single-family residential neighborhood.
Any questions? Number two, please.
The spirit of the variance is observed because the proposed garage sunroom addition will not adversely affect the spirit of the variance as it will adhere to the appearance of the existing single-family homes in the neighborhood. The landscaping and the woodscape would be minimally altered for the addition. We would plan on just taking down the trees, we need to put that in and do the, the proper topography and slope of, for proper drainage. The addition would be attached to the left-hand side of the existing home, leaving a substantial amount of land as above between the abutters. Previous variances have been granted to homeowners in the surrounding area with similar setback requirements, leaving this project in conformity with surrounding homes. Of course, our, we're always, when we come to the board for these corner lots, we're always in a disadvantage, because they have two fronts, one side and, and one rear, and that makes it very difficult, you know. Over the years, you know, when you, when you buy a corner lot, the only time you really should come to this variance board would be the, when you want to put addition, because that's when it makes it toughest on everybody, so. We're just trying to, you know, put addition on and make it look good in the neighborhood and stay with the conformity.
Questions? Number three.
Granting the variance would not do substantial justice, because substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance, and there would be no harm created to other individual, individuals or owners in the neighborhood. Currently, there are minimal homes in the surrounding neighborhood that do not have attached two-car garages. The home located at five Beaver Brook is on a corner lot with two thirty-foot setbacks, as I mentioned, and one thirty-foot setback would, would make all the difference on our, our proposed setbacks. The corner lot hinders the construction of the attached garage due to the setbacks. Normally, it should be a fifteen foot on the side, which doesn't make this variance as imposing if going in halfway in. What we're, would be willing to do so that we do not have to come back yet to this board again for variance, if it was granted, would be, we would do a certified foundation plan for that, so I would have the surveyor come in, pin that foundation, so it's exactly where the board, if they granted it, exactly where it's supposed to be is where it'll be certified. It'll be in, in the actual building department, in the file as a certified, so there's no question in the board's mind, if we get granted, it will be exactly what you grant.
Question, how much of this, if, if they didn't have two fronts, two front setbacks, how much of this would have to and not have to be approved? I'm just, I'm just curious, because it would be a fifteen foot if it was a side setback, right?
Right.
As opposed to thirty?
Right.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Quick one, are, are you impeding or encroaching on the setback to a neighbor's property?
No, it's on the road.
Only to the street?
Only to the street, yes, thank you.
Number, number four.
Four. For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding area and properties will not be diminished. The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished by granting this variance. The values of the surrounding properties will increase the RECL comp values with addition to the garage and the sunroom. It will benefit to the entire neighborhood and the owners of the property just through real estate value and comp values. Aesthetically, the addition will match the current designs of existing homes and garages in the area.
Questions? Number five.
Unnecessary hardship. Owing to the special conditions to the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardship, because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public, purpose of the owner's provisions, and the specific application of, of that provision to the property, because to not grant the variance could result in unnecessary hardship for the owner as a disabled family member requests this garage for the ability to park a car in a vehicle in the garage to avoid the snowfall hazardous conditions of icy and wet driving. Having a disability makes it difficult for safety travel from the vehicle to the house as it currently exists. This covered garage would minimize the hazards conditions that exist in the winter months, which would help tremendously.
Any questions for number two? Number two?
The proposed use is a reasonable one, because the garage sunroom addition would match the characteristics and aesthetic values of the current neighborhood.
We feel that hardship has been answered? All right, any questions for the petitioner? Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Does anybody like to speak against this petition? Okay. Any other questions or any, anything else you'd like to add before we close the public hearing?
I'm good.
You're good?
Thank you.
All right. So close the public hearing, discussion, motions?
I'll move, we grant the variance under section three point oh five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty-four by twenty-six garage, a fourteen by fourteen sunroom, and a six by thirteen point six farmer's porch with a seven point six foot, or seven foot six inch front setback whereas thirty feet is required. The parcel is located at five Beaver Brook Drive in the R two residential and the Aquifer Conservation Districts identified as tax map six C lot five forty-six.
Second.
Fran, seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, see, four zero zero. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a lovely night.
You as well, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Appreciate you waiting.
Appreciate how hard you worked for the town of Merrimack, too, thank you.
Next up, Stephen Dionne, petitioner owner, variance under section three point zero five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage with an eight foot setback, well, sorry, eight foot side setback whereas fifteen is required. The parcel is located at one twenty-one Herrick Street in the I one industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Districts Tax Map three D dash two, lot number zero one six dash zero one, case number two thousand seventeen dash forty-two. Mr. Dionne?
Hi.
Welcome. Why don't you just give us a quick overview of what we're looking at here?
My home doesn't have a garage, I have like a, a tent garage right now, and I'd like to put a two-car garage on it. I have a, I have like a, an antique vehicle in my, in my truck, you know, and I'd like to, I'd like to just have a two-car garage to put up.
It's New England, we all.
Yeah. I have a garage on the side of my house, I mean, a driveway on the side of my house that's already that wide. And that's the only spot that I can put it, is on that side of the house.
Okay.
And I guess that there's a fifteen, what is it, a fifteen foot setback, and I wanted to encroach on eight feet of it.
Okay.
To my neighbor.
Well, what I'm gonna do is, you, you have the five, you have the five points that you wrote out?
Yes.
If you could just read those, we'll probably, we'll just stop between each one in case we have any questions?
Okay.
And then go from there.
Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. My proposed request will not make any safety issues or nuisances, as all work will be done on my private land. The garage will be aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. All garage construction will be within the building codes and specs and permitting.
Questions? Number two.
The spirit of ordinance is observed because, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because my neighbor's home is still gonna be approximately seventy-five feet from my home and will be fifty feet from the proposed building, with a, with a butter of huge pine trees between the two homes that are already there on her property. So she pretty much won't even see it.
Okay.
And we have a solid fence between us anyway already. You know.
Questions? Okay, number three.
Getting the variance would, would do substantial justice, because granting the variance would allow to park cars two side by side, and keeping the vehicles out of the weather look better in the neighborhood than a portable tent garage. Most homes have a garage to protect the cars and truck and tools, and, well, and the vehicles in the neighborhood already.
Questions? Number four.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. It will make my home look better looking for the neighbor, well, it'll make the neighbors, looking at my home will be better for the neighbors to be looking at it than the tent garage that I have.
Okay. Questions? And number, number five, the first one.
Unnecessary hardship, there has, there has no effect on the neighborhood views for their, as a small, solid fence now, and it would have wind, I don't even think I would have windows on that side of the garage, and we'd be better for the, as a tent garage, like I said, now with the huge pine trees between the homes now. So pretty much she, I already talked to her about it, and she said to, she would love it, because it's just, she's a nice lady. She doesn't really mind at all. Or she would be here, I've been talking to her the whole time. She knows I love working on my Mustang and stuff like that, and I work out in the driveway on it, and she's all for it.
It's a little hard to do that in the wintertime when it gets cold out there.
In a tent, and it crushed three times last winter.
Oh, it did, really?
Yeah.
Jeez. Why don't you read in number two for us, real quick? The proposed use is reasonable one, because?
The proposed use is a reasonable one, because the proposed use is reasonable in that it allows normal use of the land in order for a normal side-sized garage, and the size of it is reasonable, because it will house two vehicles, most households have two vehicles. I have a vis, I have a visible, oh, I have a valuable antique car and would like to keep it out of the weather.
Any question?
So that we can open two doors side by side in the cars and get in and out of them.
Oh, yeah.
Me and my dad measured it, and it's just the right size to have.
So just a standard two-car garage, which you're looking to put on there?
Yeah.
There's, there's no reasonable way of orienting it differently on the lot that would stay within the?
That's where the driveway is, and it comes right off the street right there, right now, and that's where the side door of the house is.
Okay.
So what I was gonna do is keep the block, do you have a picture of it?
Yeah, that's fine.
We have a picture of the property line, but you can describe it real quick.
Well, there's a block of concrete there with my door that comes out the side.
Yeah.
And instead of putting the garage onto the house and having to make it all fire coat and everything, I was just gonna line the two side doors up so I could still get into my house normally.
Okay. So it's supposed to be detached or two-car garage?
Yeah, it's just, it's gonna be, you know, a little ways away from my home.
Okay.
Just, just the block size, I think it's like five feet, the size of the concrete block, and that's where the foundation will go around.
Two-story or one-story?
Garage?
Yeah.
Just one story.
One story.
Well, it'll have, it's gonna be rafters, so it'll have storage of a triangle upstairs.
It'll be a peak.
Yeah, but it's only gonna be eight-foot walls.
Okay.
With a, with a peak, you know what I mean?
Okay.
On the concrete, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor? Does anybody like to speak against? Close the public hearing. Can I have a, any discussion or a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to grant the variance for Stephen Dionne, petitioner owner, under section three point oh five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty-four by twenty-four garage with an eight-foot setback whereas fifteen feet is required. The parcel is located at one twenty-one Herrick Street on the I one industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map three D dash two, lot zero one six dash zero one, case number two thousand seventeen dash forty-two.
I have a second. Lenny seconds this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, four zero zero. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Last but not least, Brian LaCerta? LaCerta. Of LaCerta General Contracting LLC, petitioner, and Frank and Nancy Phillips, owners, variance under section three point zero two of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty-four by twenty-eight garage with a twenty-three foot setback whereas thirty feet is required. Wow, a lot of setbacks tonight. The parcel is located at forty-four Pearson Road in the R residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map seventy, lot zero zero four dash zero two, case number two thousand seventeen dash forty-three. Make sure you.
Mr. Chair, real quick, if I could just point one thing out?
Yes.
It was brought up to us that there is a typo in the legal notice on this one. Legal notice indicates the garage will be twenty-four by twenty-eight, it is actually twenty-four by thirty-eight, however, that does not change the side setback, it is still proposed at twenty-three feet, it just had a little typo on the notice.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's written two different numbers on the same.
So why don't you give us a quick overview of what we're looking at here and then go on the five points?
Sure. Thank you very much.
Yep.
So what we're, what we're proposing to do is build, was in essence, a three-stall garage, which will be used as a two-stall garage and a shed. The third stall will be used for storage, the lawn equipment, snow removal equipment, where the shed is existing now, because the garage will be where the shed is now. The Phillips have a handicapped daughter who has lived with them her entire life and will continue to live with them, so they have specialty equipment in the attached garage, preventing the specialty van from fitting in that garage. So we're, in essence, we're looking for a, a structure set aside that we can, we can, they actually have two vans, that we can put those two vans in and still maintain easy access to the ramp entrance to the home.
Okay. While we get into the five points, just stop after each one in case we have any questions?
Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The proposed structure maintains the full setback requirements from the street, the design cues match the look of the house, and will complement the look of the property.
Questions? Number two?
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the proposed structure is still over a hundred feet from the nearest abutter, with a large lawn and trees in between, and I did provide a photo.
Actually, we have it. Any questions? You're gonna experience, okay, number three.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because the family has a physically handicapped daughter who has and will live at the home her entire life. The specialty vans and equipment required do not fit in the existing garage. Snow removal from the vans is extremely taxing, this location is closest to the ramp entrance to the home.
Questions? Number four.
The following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The existing home is a well-maintained, attractive colonial with stone walls and walkways as well as beautiful landscaping. The pro, the proposed garage design will mirror the house in architectural detail and add to the overall curb appeal.
Number, do you have a question, Fran? Okay. Number five, number, part one.
No, fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, because although the property is large, the odd shape and position of the well and septic eliminate the options for other buildable areas with ready access to the handicap ramp.
Number two?
The proposed use is reasonable one, because the proposed building will only breach the setback requirements on one corner as shown on the plot plan.
Any questions on that? Lynn?
Nope.
Fran? Pretty straightforward, you were just looking to build a garage.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's just, it is a five-acre parcel, but it's trapezoidal with the very, the smallest side being the frontage.
And so there's really no other place you could actually put a garage that'd be feasible with the house?
We looked into adding to the existing garage a few stalls, but aesthetically, it would look like a commercial garage. And the septic and, and propane tanks are right behind that garage, so it would be a problem digging a frost wall in where the leach field is.
So you're gonna raise the existing garage and build this one?
No, we're gonna leave the existing garage where it is, and this one will be twenty-eight feet to the side with the gable facing the street, so both garages, the both gables So, both garages, the both gables will re, will face the street, so they'll, they'll look like twins, eliminating a thirty-foot-long wall facing the street. So, the twenty-four-foot wall of the garage with windows and everything will be facing the street. So, in essence, it'll look very similar to the other garage. We just felt that, well, for setback purposes, and having a thirty-eight-foot-wide garage face, you know, the thirty-eight-foot wall facing the street would not be aesthetically pleasing. This way, the garage doors are facing the house, and we're leaving enough room, there's already an existing driveway, which we will not be changing, which pulls up to the side of the existing garage, which will be the turnaround for the new one.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, all the buildings, the two garages plus the house are all gonna have the same theme.
Correct.
Will all look, basically, like they all blend in together.
Correct. The, the existing garage now has a very steep pitch, which we're gonna mirror on the new, new garage. It has a set of faux doors to, to access some storage, well, actually, those are real. We're gonna put faux doors on the other one, so it actually matches.
In, in its, in, okay, all right. That's my question. Question, Len? All right, 'cause I have to do, is there anybody that wants to speak in favor or against this petition? All right. The hearing is closed. Discussions, motions?
I'll move, we approve the variance under section three point oh two of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a twenty-four by thirty-eight garage-
Correct.
...with a twenty-three foot side setback, whereas thirty feet is required. The parcel is located at forty-four Pearson Road in the R residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts at tax map seventy lot four hyphen two.
I have a second?
Second.
Lenny's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, zero. Close, four zero zero. You are good to go.